All right, it being a little after seven tonight, we will get started. Good evening. It is about 7:02 on May 14th and I'm calling this meeting of the Planning Board to order. My name is Chris LaValle and I'm the Chair of the Board. Tonight we'll be following the posted agenda. We do not have Zoom tonight, but this meeting is being televised live and recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia and will be available on their website and YouTube. So tonight, we're going to start with the public input. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak? All right, with there being none. Our first item is going to be Kate's Corner Neighborhood Discussion. I'm hoping to try and wrap this up tonight. And the order that I'm thinking will go is we'll start with the Town Council email on zoning freeze. We'll talk a little bit about the Lockheed Martin email. And then we'll use those as backdrops to the updated slides. Excuse me. And then we'll talk about the manufacturing proposal after that. So we will first start with the Town Council emails regarding the zoning freeze. So Evan posed the question to Town Council. And essentially, what it comes down to is that the zoning freeze, if there's an A and R plan filed for the property, the property itself has the zoning freeze for the use of the land. It does not apply to neighboring properties. And it, in the opinion of Town Council, does not protect from setback requirements in those changes. So it would only be the use freeze. So that is the opinion of the council. And again, it doesn't, in the case that we were talking about last time, it would have to be the neighbors applying for the A and R and not Lockheed's property.
The neighbors, you mean for, like if we were to change their CB to a residential or something like that?
Yeah, so the context that we were talking about this last meeting was if we were to change those commercial, the back half of those properties is commercial to residential. It would impact the setbacks. And so that, the property owners of those properties would need to file the A and R to freeze their zoning. All right.
But it wouldn't affect their setbacks?
Correct. But I think that's kind of the moot point because Lockheed Martin wouldn't be able to freeze the zoning. So. All right, the other item is the graphic that Lockheed Martin sent with the existing zoning, proposed zoning, if we were to change them all RB. And then with the SEOT overlay, what that would look like. So I'll give you a minute to look at that because these are fairly new documents that came in late this week. And then the email that they sent was based, was their analysis. And in summary, what it said is that if we were to make these changes on the underlying zoning, they would not be able to redevelop that property because of the setbacks requirements. However, the overlay would provide relief. And with the setbacks that we have put into the overlay, it would give them enough leeway to do some redevelopment on that property.
So I have a question on the existing proposed zoning comparison. I think this is Lockheed.
The map?
The map.
Yep.
Is this, and I see the, oh, line, the red dots. I guess it's a question to them. Is this a building dimensions or this would be like parking lot dimensions? What, what were we trying to show here?
Looks like the setbacks, but.
Yeah, the setbacks are the same.
For the record, Connor Nagel with VHB. What the graphic is showing, the red line is the building setback. So the developable area or building envelope that could be put on those in the various conditions, the middle one being the proposed zoning versus the SEOT special permit overlay.
So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong. Sorry, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, would you were, and obviously things can change, I get that. Looking at this property as possibly being like a parking lot and building out your current area. Is that still on the table that way or are we changing it?
No.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Hi, Anthony Pippman with Lockheed Martin. No, the graph doesn't show any concepts. It was just trying to analyze what the setbacks would do. So then we can go start coming up with ideas for either the parking or using the existing structure. So that's what the visuals intended to show. But the takeaway is we can use the COAT. It looks like the COAT option would give us what we need to start coming up with concepts. Yeah.
Okay.
But the visual doesn't show.
Really weird shaped building, so I was kind of, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, as Connor was, the red was just to highlight if we went with the proposed and didn't have COAT, we probably couldn't do anything. Anyone would be limited.
Right, yeah.
But with COAT, we can start coming up with concepts within that red boundary.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we go on to the slides, any questions on the Town Council email or the Lockheed Martin zoning? Okay. All right, so what I did with the slides is I took the updates that Anita had in the, in the spreadsheet and updated the slides, put all of our changes in yellow. Sorry, it's a little pixelated. We went through all of these last time, so I'm not going to go through them much this time. That should be yellow as well.
I had a couple quick questions. One, we haven't gotten to the page yet, but in the use table, multifamily is not allowed. And in keeping with our kind of more general concept of village development with retail on the ground floor and potentially residential up above, I wonder if that would be something that we would potentially entertain?
Part of the discussion we had last time is because this zone is intended to be a buffer between industrial and.
Then you don't put housing.
Yeah, it's not really the village zone, it's the buffer between.
Other zones that would allow something like that. Right, like you can put, like look at our commercial zoning and we could add something like that.
Okay.
This is more, like these are just in the.
Industrial.
Like, yeah, this is not all our zoning, right?
But with a SEOT overlay, you can introduce.
You could.
Yeah.
A special permit.
So you could do this with the underlying, with the COAT. You could do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Let me highlight slide 12 and 13. So the parking lot accessory use is the one, one of the open questions from last time that we were going to look at. So on this slide, I have updated the note to show accessory use parking lots are required to be either on the same lot with the parking generating activity or on any lot or premises, a substantial portion of which is at least within 300 feet of such activity. And the recommendation last time was that Wayland had a really good description and this is essentially copied and pasted from them. Evan did provide some suggested text. He suggested that we change with the parking generated activity to as the principal use. So on the same lot as the principal use or on any lot or premises, a substantial portion of which is at least 300 feet. Within 300 feet of the principal use. So in keeping with the terminology that we already use.
That makes sense.
Anyone have concerns with that?
No, it's good.
No.
Okay. All right. And then we will get to the actual parcels. So this is what we had proposed, that I had proposed last meeting. Questions, comments?
No, I think this is in line with the rule. P is public, just to, right, P is public.
Yep, P is public. The RB would be extended to the entire residential areas. CBLT would be applied to all three of the commercial, these three parcels. These would stay CA. The CA would be extended here and the Ps would be extended here. Everything else stays RB. This would stay CB at the bottom. I believe that's the gas station near the pond. And then these would all stay RB. And then as we talked about earlier, the relief for that odd shaped property would come from the overlay. But this would allow us to apply this zoning in a lot of other areas, I think, too. Thoughts?
I think that looks like a good plan. I think we should see what the neighbors think at some point.
Yep.
Open it up to.
Yeah, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll open it up for public comment on anything we talked about so far. Quiet crowd.
Yeah.
All right.
You guys get a chance to look at these parcel rezonings?
We outlasted them.
All right, so.
No, it looks good. What we want to accomplish.
Yeah, I think so.
Hopefully what they wanted to accomplish.
And again, this is all preliminary. We'll still have to go through the public hearing process for all zoning articles, which will be quite extensive, I think, for the next Fall Town Meeting. We'll go over that later.
It'd be a good idea to get started early.
Yeah, we'll go over that later, how much zoning we might have to do in the fall. But the next item I wanted to talk through is the manufacturing proposal. So I went back on this and took another look at this along with my friend ChatGPT. And so these are our current definitions now of the light and heavy manufacturing.
We don't allow heavy, correct?
Correct. We have it defined as an exclusion essentially.
Yep.
But I wanted to keep it here as kind of a contrast with the light. So those are our current definitions. I took a look at Tewksbury because what I also noticed is that they recently had a town meeting where they did address this exact topic in their Spring Town Meeting. And they redefined light industrial warehouse. Not exactly the same as ours, but similar. So this is what they passed in their town meeting. And they also have specific uses in the use table for research and development laboratory, which may include accessory manufacturing of products in testing and development and high-tech biotech manufacturing. They don't have those defined in their zoning, but they have them in the use table. So I wanted to give you that information as kind of a.
And we're excluding the distribution.
Yes, distribution is excluded.
Correct.
All right, so this is what I am proposing for light manufacturing. I think this one is the same as last time, maybe. And then the ultralight, I'm proposing a new one. So I left the, the old one that I proposed last time here in gray, so you can take a look. But the new one is here. It includes some of the stuff that we talked about last meeting, the small scale, small batch. It talks, I'm hoping this covers the Lockheed case, but they can also talk to that as well. Where it talks about precision fabrication, intricate assembly, controlled treatment, packaging, distributions, typically operating at low and customized production volumes, smaller scale specialized equipment for precision and customization, limited loading infrastructure. We, I have a placeholder here for docs in case we wanted to do that. Operations confined to standard business hours. Tractor trailer use limited to delivery only and no overnight parking of the tractor trailers. So that again pulls out the, the really heavy distribution from this. It does include a facility size. This was a suggestion from someone earlier. And I did include a lot more examples that we could use here as well. Evan did have some feedback on this that I'll want to share with you. He does not recommend including a maximum facility size for light and an ultralight industrial for the following reasons. Most of the industrial, most of the light industrial type buildings already exist. So we may end up getting into non-conforming use cases. And then we would need to figure out a permitting process for relief as well if, if that were listed there. And then he also reminded me that businesses over 20,000 square feet would still trigger a major business complex special permit anyway. So adding the facility size in here may not be necessary. He did say if the ultralight industrial is permitted by right, then he could see potentially including a maximum facility size like we do with the, the distribution and warehouse.
Or even the retail in this.
Yep.
In this light zone.
Yep. The other thing I noticed is, I don't have it here, but we do have an R and D definition in our use, in our use table as well. So I wasn't sure if the Lockheed use would fit under that as opposed to manufacturing for this facility. That's something I, I kind of wanted to raise to the Lockheed folks. Because I don't want to, if, if it, if the Lockheed facility here fits more into that use case, I really wouldn't want to twist things around too much to make the manufacturing fit if it's, if the primary use of that facility is more R and D.
Yeah, and I, I'm a little bit, like, I appreciate the detail, right?
I know, it's too, it's too much.
It's, like, I think when you have a little bit more vague, it provides a little bit more flexibility. Right, when you're very specific like this, then it doesn't allow, like, as soon as we get this voted on, there'll be a case in six months that we didn't consider to think about and then it's too specific and then it doesn't.
Well, actually, it's funny, I look at it rather differently, but I come to the same conclusion, which is that there are so many terms in there whose definition is subject.
Wiggly.
To all kinds of twisting.
Yeah.
I spent four years of night school learning how to twist language. And this stuff could be twisted pretty badly. I mean, and it may be, as Anita says, that something a little more generic might actually work better in that. I mean, I try to think of examples that, I mean, somebody that had a little outfit processing beeswax, you know? Well, they may not be making a final product with it, they may not be making the candles. But it's pretty tinging. It's not intricate.
But it is small batch and small scale.
But it is small batch, well, how small is a small batch?
I feel like this is trying to give a feel of the.
Yeah.
Red.
And I like the feel, but.
Yeah, I do too.
But, but, but making it, making it applicable from a legal perspective.
Yeah.
Concerns me.
What was the, what was the problem we're trying to solve with this?
So there are a couple of things, I think. Number one, I think, based on what I remember our discussion being, is that our current definition of light manufacturing is a little bit, I think, in some cases, it could be a little heavier than we would want in some of these zones. Or in this zone specifically. It's fine for the industrial zone, but for this neighborhood buffer zone, it might be a little bit too heavy. So the thinking is, is that we should have something a little bit lighter that we would put into this buffer zone.
Maybe we should concentrate a little bit less on the use and a little bit more on the results of that use. I mean, what is it that people don't want? They don't want noise.
Noise.
They don't want a whole lot of light at bad times. They don't want a pile of trucks in the, in the driveway. Those are the things that people see.
The impacts.
The impacts.
I, so, I would recommend, I'm like reading this, right? It still has to come through the Planning Board. We set setbacks. I'm thinking maybe we, like, let the manufacturing light? Like, let's see what comes in. And whether, because we can always deny something through the special permit process if it doesn't work. And if we see that there's some, something we're seeing that shouldn't, like, for example, the contractor yard, right? We knew that that wasn't right for this area, so we're coming up with a new zoning for it.
It, it's by right in our zone.
Right, but I assume these are going to be, they're not going to be large. If anything over 20,000 square feet has to come to us regardless.
But it's still by right.
Yeah.
That's the problem, is that if it's under 20,000 square feet.
But it's still by right now anyways, under IA in the areas that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Are going to, like, so.
We're trying to change that.
Yeah, and, and that's my point, is that in these buffer areas, we wouldn't want that impact. That, right now, the way it's defined, that's going to be a significant impact in, in these buffer areas.
But right now, we have IA, which already, it's already this.
Yeah, and we're trying to change that.
Oh, I get that, we're trying to change it.
I mean, if you look at the 129 area.
Yeah, well, I want, well, the 129 and one, or Riverneck, you're talking.
Both.
But 129 wouldn't change to.
No, it wouldn't, but you take some of those buildings right next to residential in this type of an area.
Oh, so you put the bound, the boundary properties into this zoning, yeah?
I like a little bit about what Tewksbury has in their definition where they're talking about van or small box truck for transit and tractor trailers.
Can you?
Ooh.
Is it close enough? I'm looking at the Tewksbury definition and one of the things that I like about what they have, and I think you put something similar into there where you're talking about utilizing van or small truck for transit, tractor trailer use only for delivery. That's kind of important because using vans and box trucks really limits what type of size of product they could be putting in there. So that kind of limits what they can have in the area. So that's an important, an important statement, you know? Because you talk about small in a lot of places within this thing here, which small is relative. But you're limiting it by what they can pick it up in, which is pretty impactful.
As far as the definition for, under version two, I mean, two, if we do rewrite it, two things that I would try to keep, I think it's, it's good that it addresses, is the loading infrastructure. Because to me, it's a transitional zone, there's a big difference where the company has two loading docks or 12, because it's all going to revolve around truck traffic in and out. And then the operations for standard business hours, because I think that's something neighbors would be concerned about. You know, are we talking, you know, eight to 6:00 PM? Are we, because you don't, in a transition zone, you wouldn't want 24/7 or late night traffic in and out of that facility.
Yeah, when you're talking about business hours, I mean, it's one thing to regulate the business hours. It's another thing to regulate the hours at which transport can go in and out. Those are two different things. I think regulating the transport makes a lot of sense. I mean, if somebody wants to be developing pictures or making beeswax at 2:00 in the morning, I don't think it matters much.
Well, assuming that the.
They're not transporting it or lighting the neighborhood up or making a loud thump, thump, thump.
Yeah, and I think this is the key sentence for that, is that the operations must be fully enclosed.
Yes.
With nothing external.
Yeah, that's the most important piece.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I don't know that we need, so what I hear you saying is you don't think that standard business hours needs to be regulated?
Well, I, I think we need to regulate the things that bother people. And somebody in a, in a closed building, doesn't really matter when they're there, it's, it's hard to bother the neighborhood.
What about when they're driving there to go park or they're driving there to go leave and they're making noise that way?
Well, it depends, if it's one car, you're going to have one car going by all the time anyway. You stand out on that road, you're going to see one every 10 minutes, even at night.
Well, they might have a shift.
You might have a shift, you know? But typically the shifts, second and third shift, the only one that would be problematic would be a third shift start around midnight. And, you know, if it's a shift of five people, it's one thing, if it's a shift of 50, it's another.
You could be having smoke breaks outside.
That they might be, but hopefully the property's big enough to handle that. And in the long run, that's.
I understand, I'm trying to think of how, where people are, right?
Yeah.
Our dialogue didn't go through, so you know, the lights are definitely going to be bright.
All right, if folks want to send me suggested edits, updates, I can compile it and bring it back to the board another time. I will ask for public comment in a minute, but I did want to read what we have now for the definition of research and development facilities. And looking at the use table, we do have research and development as a special permit for this zone. So research and development facilities are those used primarily for research, development, and/or testing of innovative information, concepts, methods, processes, materials, or products. This can include design, development, and testing of biological, chemical, electrical, magnetic, mechanical, and/or optical components in advance of product manufacturing. Accessory development, fabrication, and light manufacturing of prototypes or specialized machinery and devices integral to research or testing may be associated with these uses. Research and development related principally to computer software is not included in this definition.
So software development is not included in R and D?
Hardware. Research and development related principally to computer. Research and development related principally to computer software.
Yeah, basically. Programming is not considered R&amp;D.
Right. In and of itself, if it's associated with
Don't take it personally.
I just test them.
Weird. It does seem counterintuitive.
Yeah, it seems very counterintuitive. Because it's actually, I mean, to write computer software, it doesn't make noise. You know, it doesn't light up the sky.
Unless it's not working.
Unless it's not working.
The program is making noise.
Been there.
All right.
Seems like we'd want to allow that.
Yeah, and, and I think that in most cases, we probably would, but it's still a special permit because of the potential variation that we could get. All right. So I'm going to open it up to public comment on the definitions of manufacturing. If folks have any input or ideas, if the Lockheed Martin folks want to also talk to the potential R&amp;D definition as it might apply to Lockheed, I don't know. I'm curious as to which, which definition the Lockheed
Sure. Hi, Anthony Pittman again with Lockheed Martin. Yeah, I, we definitely fit in the R&amp;D category, but I feel like we also fit into that light manufacturing, because without a little bit of that first type of sentence describing small batch, kind of high-value, small-scale production, I would fear that the R&amp;D would just box us into all that pre-stuff. So, I'd like to take some time with my team to kind of study both and maybe give some recommendations. But at face value, the light manufacturing also, as I'm reading through, I'm like, oh, yes, yes, yes. I agree with Michael on the standard operating hours, because we do today discreetly operate second and third shifts. Very small quantity, but security guards, some engineers, some light, you know, operators of equipment. So, that would be something we would, we'd want to look at. And then agree with Evan's recommendation not to limit the size of that, just because we would be limited just by the footprint and the setbacks anyways. But those are just initial thoughts.
Okay.
But agree, the R&amp;D matches, but that light manufacturing at face value, there's some, there's some context in there that I think.
Because you're, you're not just, you're also producing, right?
Yes, sir.
You actually have production.
Are you producing or prototyping?
Both. Yeah, so definitely all R&amp;D, but we are producing. We'll get into that once it's, it's very small batch.
They don't handle it up to somebody else, they actually do.
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay.
And it gets scaled up some places?
Uh, no, we just, at our, at our factory, the rates are relatively small batch customized. So even though they're, we think they're high rates in the grand context of manufacturing, they're, they're, they're very small.
What would you consider your primary use of that facility?
It's It's both. I mean, I think the type of work that we do, that high-tech, half of the workforce are design engineers, designing that type of tech, prototyping, doing the testing, and then the other half, then, once it's ready for production, they're building on that small scale.
Okay. Thank you.
So, but we'll, we'll take some time to look at it, but at face value, both of them seem to capture the aura of, of what we do today.
Okay, thanks. That's actually something to keep in mind as we're developing the definition and the use table. Because if there are businesses that fall into both, we want to make sure that they're not counteracting each other. So if we have one by right, we should try and have the other one by right. If they're, if it's special permit, we should probably have the other one special permit. So that's something to keep in mind.
Simply say if, if two things apply, the least restrictive shall apply. Another way that I
Yeah. I want to try and avoid the overlap as much as possible.
Yeah, that's a good point, because it creates confusion.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other items of discussion on this? All right, so I think we've wrapped everything except for this definition and the associated use line in the table. So we'll pick that discussion up at the next meeting. And hopefully finalize that, and then it should be ready for public hearing. All right, thank you, everyone.
We'll get there.
All right.
Excuse me.
We have no new or continued public hearings. Surprising, the second meeting in a row. All right.
Get used to it.
So now we get into some of the other topics of discussion. The town meeting debrief is the first one. So the 129, for those of you who didn't follow the town meeting, 129 overlay was defeated. That is not changing. The zoning changes for floodplain passed. And then the zoning changes for the family definition. And the school, removing schools from consideration for special permits was defeated. Am I missing anything? Oh, the lighting bylaw was also defeated as well.
Well, it was close.
Sorry, it was pulled. Sorry.
It may well be that the, that not getting the family definition change may be moot, because that may just be stuffed down our throat by a court anyway.
If, if
If it comes to
If it comes up, I would like, and we'll talk about it further down, but I would like to try it again at
Yeah.
Fall town meeting.
I would recommend.
My takeaway from this town meeting is that we should separate all of the articles. Any zoning that does not really relate to each other, we should keep it separate. It's going to make things longer, but I don't know if the school thing would have passed had it been separate from the family definition. So, that's my takeaway from town meeting, is that as much as I would like to group them together, I think it causes too many problems and confusion.
I forget, did you say the flood one passed or didn't pass?
It did. It passed, yep.
They needed to do that one, okay.
Yep. Any other thoughts on town meeting?
I think with the, the whole thing with the school issue is some reps may have misunderstood that, you know, we're not saying all of us, you know, and I, I'm sure all of the reps know that there's definitely a cost to educate a child. We all know that, but it's just we, the state is telling us we cannot use that as a criteria.
To deny a project.
To deny a project, so maybe that's, if we do take another crack at it.
Yep.
I think that's where the disconnect was.
Yeah, they seem very confused, and I was curious when we go to do this one in the fall, if there was any way to present the material any differently. Because I don't know how many people were understanding what was being told to them. They were all getting fixated on words when I heard them speaking. Like, like the family, that's all you heard for quite a while.
Yeah.
But I, and that's why I don't know if there's any other way to twist the stuff, not twist it, but change the stuff, so they're more focused on pieces they need to hear.
Yeah. One of the other things that I realized is that, as a presenter up there, I cannot argue points. I would have to go to the microphone to argue. So I can clarify things if people ask questions. So one of the things that we might want to do a little bit more of next town meeting is tag team, have other board members come up and make clarifying points. Or ask me as the presenter, if I'm presenting, if I could clarify or speak to a specific point. So, that's something we might want to think about for next town meeting.
I think that'd be a great idea, because I saw you came off once to go say something, but then you weren't up there to answer, so.
Yep.
Want to ask questions, we're all set.
Yeah, and there were a few points where I really wanted to clarify some incorrect information, but I couldn't, because I wouldn't be able to make it down and back, and so. Okay. Anything else? All right. ADU bylaw. So the I don't think we need to put that up, but the ADU bylaw update is that the Attorney General did receive opposition letters from a resident. I think they received three of them. And so they've asked, the Attorney General has asked the town to approve a 45-day extension to the 90-day review period, to be able to review the complaints. And it'll allow the town council to respond to the complaints as well.
Who is it that grants that? Is that the selectmen, select board?
No, I think it was town manager gave
We might as well, there's no reason
Yeah, town manager approved it through town council.
And through us. I mean, we, we waited on it, and emailed from it, right? I, I feel like I got something saying
I don't think so.
No? Well, I would like to
I think you're right. I think they mentioned it, but
The town manager did.
Yeah.
Yeah. He extended it.
I, I just want to stipulate that, in my understanding, see if it's what you guys understand as well, that this is just by means of them requiring a bit more time to review everything, and has nothing to do with that there's merit.
Right.
Or any judgment, positive or negative.
Correct.
Their standard operating procedures. They got a complaint, they know
No, we need to think about it more. We started reviewing the complaint however many days before the deadline, and there's lots of other, probably towns in similar situations, so they
Yep.
Need more time.
Yep. All right. So after the 45-day extension, I'm hoping that we hear something back, one way or the other. Fall town meeting articles, okay. So, let me not do the massage special permit discussion yet. But essentially, what I'm seeing for fall town meeting zoning articles is the CR light, or sorry, CB light. The Kate's Corner rezoning, potentially the Mill Area rezoning. The family definition. The school impact. The, if we do something with the industrial light definition, that will be included. And then this issue on the massage services. So there are a lot of zoning articles that we're going to have to refine and put to public input or public process, so. Going to be a busy season.
Yeah, but we've already done a bit of work on all of this, except the massage.
Yeah. And I plan on, in the next couple of weeks, I plan on revising the family and school impact based on feedback tonight and feedback from town meeting, and then I'll bring it back to the board again with draft. Are there any other things that we would want to bring to town meeting that you can think of?
I think that's a
That's a I mean, there are lots of things we could bring, but I don't think we have the time to develop them.
So is fall meeting going to go three days now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's get into the
Massage?
Yeah.
State planning grant, next on the agenda.
No massage?
No, because we just did state, we just, fall town meeting, and the next item is state planning.
Fall town meeting is the massage.
Oh, sorry.
Triggered by the
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't finish reading the sentence. My fault.
All right, so let me see if I can summarize this. It was a little bit of a confusing thread. But I think there are a couple different issues. The first is, we have a definition in our use table that is different than the state's definition. And it specifically calls out massage therapists as exempt from, or not included in this definition. If, if they're permit, if they're permitted to practice under the rules and regulations of the Board of Health. The Board of Health no longer, or I'm not sure if they ever did license or permit massage therapists. It's the state that does that. So at the very least, we should remove this section of that regulation of the bylaw.
Even if the state does, like, give them a license, does the health department not go in and check on occasion, like, inspect the area, the building, the space?
They might. That's not an R.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if they give them inspections.
For space?
It might be the state that does the inspections, I'm not sure.
I can ask.
Anyway, it's not us.
It's kind of like, like a nail technician.
Even if they do, that would have nothing to do with zoning.
Yeah, doctor's offices, you know, the
I'm trying to find
Governing bodies, not the planning board.
And I remember something had to do with before, like, so I had a massage therapist who actually, like, changed locations in Chelmsford, had to go in front of the select board? They had to go in front of some board to get approval.
I think it is the planning board. Because the, the location is permitted under special permits for this use. So if they move locations, and this is part of the confusion here, is that the I think the question was, does the special permit follow the person, or is it the because there's a little confusion between the licensing of therapist, massage therapists, and the use as a special permit.
But, but, but hold on a second. Like, do we, like, the planning board doesn't approve nail technicians or spas?
Why, why are we even bothering?
Approving, like, massage therapists, like
They have, I think, plenty of state regulation.
Massage
In their licensure.
Massage service establishment is Board of Appeals. Or CA, CB, CC, CD, and CV.
Okay, but, but what about, like, hair salons, nails? Spas? I, I remember, so needless to say, I remember I had to go in front, like, to speak in favor of allowing this woman to change locations, which was, by the way, across the street, which was ridiculous. She went from one side of Chelmsford Street to the other. It just seemed silly to me, and she, and her, a lot of her clients were, because she did a lot of lymphatic massages for people who were suffering from cancer.
Yeah.
Like, like, why are we, I just seemed odd that we do that.
Well, I mean, you gotta go back to the history of this. You go back fifty years, and views were very, very different.
Right.
And there wasn't a state, probably, licensing board.
And there was probably a negative connotation to whatever, massage, like, whatever, but like, I think we can move, like
Well, we do, if you look at the use table and the zoning, we do the same thing for medical offices and centers. We do the same thing for medical clinics, tattoo parlors. So all of those are uses allowed in our zoning.
Yep.
And I would see massages similar in that, as medical office. So, I think, A, the definition is problematic, because I think it, it's misaligned with the state's definition. But I do think we should have it in our use table.
Do we, so do we have salons in our use table? Yes.
I believe so.
And spas?
I'm not sure what it's under, but I'm almost positive we have I think spas might be covered under massage service establishment.
Yeah, under commercial
Excludes barbers and beauticians. Excludes barbers and physicians. If you look under the definitions.
It excludes barbers.
Massage service establishment, yeah.
Body art.
Physicians and so forth and so on. If you look at that.
They're all under D, commercial. Of, uh, one ninety-five, attachment one, colon, three. Body art, health club, massage.
So I think the idea is that we're not looking to remove it as a use, but to redefine it using the state's definition.
I would redefine it, but I also, like, right now, we have, if you look at massage service establishments, it's no, 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 except for CA, CB, CC, CD, CB.
Yeah, commercial.
And those are all BA.
Yeah.
Like, like, again. Like, I don't know, like. That should be a BA.
Like, that doesn't seem like something we become in a planning board. I want to do a massage.
ZBA, like, again, like.
Unless you're building.
Like, unless you're building, like, a huge facility that's like, I don't know, three thousand massage therapists in there. Like, like, this is a small, these people, like, there's not, like, I don't see nail technician has to go to the, to the ZBA.
I think they might.
Where do you see that? Nail, nail, nail technicians. We don't go, hair, hair salons, we don't do barbers.
But we do do, uh, tattoo parlors.
Yes.
Yeah, but tattoo parlors, like, you're sticking people with needles.
Okay, so.
At a spa, they could be doing acupuncture.
That's my point where.
But that's, those spas, not massage, though. This is massage.
Massage wouldn't do acupuncture.
Well, I mean, we're basically playing around with an idea of medical.
Maybe we should call it wellness.
Yeah.
Massage wellness, but, I don't know. I, again, I just thought it was really ridiculous. This one woman who went from one side of the street to the next side of the street had asked me to go speak, and, like, me and some of her other clients to go speak so she could get this approval. I thought that was a little over the top.
Intrusive.
Yep.
For, again, I understand the history of the massage, you know, maybe there was a negative connotation. But the people that spoke up for her were, you know, cancer survivors who utilized her, she, you know, she does regular massages for relaxation and, you know, tight.
Deep tissue.
Right. To, you know, folks who, you know, got through chemotherapy and lymphatic massages that they use as part of their recovery, so.
But that's the, that would be the case with any change of use. Any change of use has to come before the board.
I'm telling you, this is one sole proprietor going from one side of the street to the other side of the street.
But what was the use of the property?
The same thing, like, it didn't change zone areas.
No, but the use changed. The use of that, the building they were going into might have been office use.
No, 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 it wasn't.
What was it?
It was, like, other spa stuff. So one side had spa, the other side, like, hair spas. And it was literally going from one side to the other.
So that was a change of use.
Oh, okay, but she had to come through because she's a massage, had to go through the ZBA because she was a massage therapist.
Maybe we ought to ask the ZBA what they think of this.
But she wouldn't have had to if there was a, if that new property was already.
As a massage therapist.
Yeah.
But it wasn't.
Right.
I'm guessing it has a lot more to do with the fact that it's being regulated by the Board of Health. Because the other things that are being regulated by the Board of Health also show up in our zoning. So I imagine that those are probably highly related.
So I'm with you with changing it for, like, making it mirror the state, but can we look at?
Removing it?
Like, not removing it, but at least give me an answer of why this woman had to go, like, man, I was happy to do it as a client, but it just seemed a little.
I mean, we can talk to Evan when he gets back next meeting, but my guess is it's partially because of the change of use and partially because it was a use that is regulated by the Board of Health.
Are there any zones that allow it or every time they go, they need a special permit?
It's BA, but like, then why does, like, you know, like, a spa, like, where you go get facials, not, they can go anywhere, like.
Because facials aren't regulated by the Board of Health.
And massages are?
Yes.
So your facial should be, isn't it?
Massage, massage, massage therapists are regulated by the Board of Health.
But I thought you just said they weren't.
If you read the definition of massage service establishment, it makes reference to.
What we have.
That they're regulated by the Board of Health.
Well, we're gonna change that.
But they are regulated by state.
They're regulated by the Board of Health. That's the health regulations, I would say about that.
Oh, why? I just lost my mind.
If they're regulated by the Board of Health, we don't have any influence on whether they're regulated under the health regulations or not, right? The only question would be, are we coordinating our activities of zoning with their regulation of activities? So I could bring it up with the Board of Health and ask them like.
So the question is, we should ask the Board of Health whether they need to regulate this. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, they, they are regulating it. There, there, I'm sure there's a health regulation that they're operating under.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, you know.
I don't, okay.
Well, it, it's not, according to this thread, it's not regulated by the Chelmsford Board of Health. It's regulated by the state Board of Health. It's a state regulation.
Chelmsford Board of Health also involved in this if they're local in our town.
I don't think they are. I think it was written in a way that they would have been, but according to this thread, maybe they were back then, but the state might have taken that over.
Yeah, I think that's when I was reading some of this thread, I was getting very confused. I'm like, why is it just the state, not local Board of Health doing, taking care of, looking at some of the stuff?
But that's also, like, I think estheticians, electrolysis, right? Those are all regulated by state agencies, nail technicians, right? And we don't call those out separate, my point is we don't call those out separately. I don't know, I'm just trying to make it easier for, like.
I'm almost, I thought we did.
Okay. So, action points, we're gonna talk to the ZBA?
So, I think. I think.
And the Board of Health.
Joel can talk to the Board of Health next meeting.
We're gonna sync the definitions.
We will, I will draft something about rewording the definition to, um, refer to the state definition. And then we can talk to Evan next week, or next meeting, about the regulation in the use table.
Maybe look at some other towns.
Do you want to look at other towns?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, our current zoning makes reference to chapter two oh one, Board of Health, Article eight, massage slash musco therapy. So unless that somehow magically disappeared.
I think it did, actually, and, and looking at the.
June twenty twenty-four.
I don't know. But according to that thread, the Board of, the Chelmsford Board of Health does not license massage therapists. It's the state.
Uh, well, right, I don't think they would.
Right.
I wouldn't, don't think they would license them, but they do regulate them.
They may regulate them.
Maybe, yeah.
And they, so there are clear, at least according to this, there are clear Chelmsford regulations under which the Board of Health, uh, regulates massage therapy.
Alright. So we'll.
I'll, I'll ask them.
Ask them. Ask them if there's a reason why I go, like, it needs to be go through the ZBA.
Well, they wouldn't know that, because that's, I mean, I, I, I'll ask them if they know, but I mean, I would think Evan would.
Evan will know that.
Who would be the best.
If there's a history behind it, maybe, or, I don't know.
Alright. My guess would be it's because if there's a Board of Health regulated activity that you want to also control where that regulated activity occurs, it'd be my guess. That's the principle that's behind it.
Alright, so we'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
Alright, next item, we're gonna talk about managing growth and the strategic plan first, then we'll go back to the state planning grant. So the, the report, the strategic plan, uh, report came out, uh, it's linked, um, in the agenda. And the next step is to set up an implementation committee. I am going to be meeting with Evan, Aaron, and Paul to talk through a little bit about, um, what the expectation is, get a little bit more detail on the strategic plan and the managed growth strategy. Some of the questions I have around that is specifically around the terms managed growth. Because to me, managed growth means controlled and limited growth, not encouraging growth. And I want to make sure that we're all talking the same language and.
I think you'll find you're not.
I think so too. And that's why I want to be clear about what we are going to be talking about.
That was an interesting piece of the conversation that took place with the Strategic Planning Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and there were clearly a number of views on how extensive or how limited growth ought to be. And it seems to be a fifty-fifty split.
And I've said it before in this, this meeting, and I'll say it again. Zoning and planning boards are not designed to encourage growth and encourage, um, expansion. We are designed to limit, control, and set the minimum standards. Where it goes beyond that is up to other entities and bodies. That can be in, in the form of tax advantages and programs run by the municipality to encourage companies and, and growth to come in. But zoning, as we've seen in some of these overlays, by itself does not encourage growth necessarily, so. I think it can, it can help.
Yeah.
Um, and it can.
Has to be able to help.
We can remove roadblocks, but in encouraging growth and enhancing growth, I don't think.
Well, if I, if I read what I saw from some of the other committees, it's a hot potato and they're trying to throw it at us.
I know.
Right.
That's why I'm meeting with Aaron and Paul and Evan.
Wear your asbestos gloves.
So we'll meet with, with them, um, in the next few weeks. Uh, I think Paul's gonna try and set up some time and then we'll come back to this board with, uh, some updates. In the meantime, I would encourage you to read the, um, section, uh, I think it's R six, where it talks about the managed growth strategy, um, and some of the areas in there.
I think you'll find there's not actually a lot of strategy in it.
Nope.
No.
Again, having been part of the conversation, the idea was, let's get the planning board to do it.
Punched it over there.
Because we don't want to.
So.
Well, you know, you were the, some of that.
Yeah. And so that brings me to the state planning grant.
Yeah.
Evan was about to hit the trigger and submit, um, for that grant, uh, for us to be able to get some assistance to hire a consultant for reviewing and updating the use tables and zoning map. But as he was thinking about it in relation to this, um, strategic plan, we're wondering if it might make sense to incorporate that into this grant. Because if we do get the strategic plan coming towards us and need to do some type of, uh, strategic planning, that should probably be done first before we take a look at the zoning tables and, uh, things like that, so.
Good point.
We weren't sure if we would replace the work that we would do with the tables and zoning with the strategic plan for this consultant, or that we would essentially add it to and kind of do a, a stepwise strategic, strategic plan first and then look at the, uh, zoning and tables. But I think what we do with that will come out of the discussions, um, in the next few weeks with, uh, the select board. So.
What is it, what is it we're looking to accomplish, uh, on, like, when you say strategic plan, what are we actually talking about?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because if you look at the strategic plan, which I will bring up now.
Find that section. Page fourteen.
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of kind of managed controlled words in there.
Yep.
Our goal, intentional, harmonized, balanced, preserving.
There's not a lot of ex, like, open space for us to grow. It's like, we're gonna, like, this town's gonna change. It's really redevelopment.
Right. Yeah, we're in redevelopment.
Like, we're not in a, like, there's no room for people to, we don't have land for people to grow.
We either need to redevelop or grow up, and we don't really necessarily want to grow up. Page fourteen.
It is fourteen.
Yeah.
I'm on fourteen. I mean, the, the original thinking that, at least I thought that, at least in my mind, the origin of applying for the grant was that we were, um, there were views expressed that the board, um, was basically acting in a very protective, not wanting to grant things, and not in a way that was conducive for, um, businesses to come in to town. So basically, it was being laid at our feet that, that we weren't, you know, aware of market conditions, that we weren't aware of what we could do that could actually make things better, and we're just making them worse. And so the whole idea was, okay, uh, you know, if you don't think that we know what we're doing, then why don't we get somebody to help us to know what to do? And in particular, to identify what is it that we think zoning wise is gonna help? And that in part, that has to rely upon some ideas to what the projection of the market needs are gonna be with regards to land use. And that's where, you know, we were seeking to get a consultant. So that's, that was really the driving force behind our getting the grant. To me, it seems like that serves this purpose. It seems like it serves the other purpose.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I think the grant is generic and, or general enough.
It is.
General is the right word.
It is.
That we should probably go forward with it, because I hate to leave money on the table.
Oh, yeah, we're good.
I think the main thing is that we weren't intending that with a, with the consultant, that we were gonna sit down on day two and pull out the zoning and start saying, okay, what should the zoning be? It was for there to be research, it was there for people to come and talk to us about so that we had some sense of what the needs are, what made sense for us to do, and then to start to think about what would the zoning be to correspond with that, so.
Yeah, hundred percent accurate, and with this new information, I think we need to get some clarity on what is being put at our feet with the strategic plan before we go there because that, what, the scope of this may influence that. And, yeah, you're a hundred percent accurate of what we're looking to do.
But I don't know, I mean, I don't necessarily think, because, like, I'm reaching out to my network, right? Because I know, um, you know, realtors and, and, you know, in the greater Boston area that, you know, work with businesses. I'm still reaching out and trying to, like, I think the grant was for us to educate ourselves on the market conditions. And I still think that's independent of the strategic plan. Like, we can still educate ourselves and find out what the needs are.
Absolutely. I, I'd love to have somebody just come in and give us.
A market outlook.
Six or eight hours, more than the market outlook. This is what the market is, this is how it goes together, this is what the pieces are that play in the market, and this is how you judge it.
But I think if we can clarify this, that will help us get some perspective on what we're trying to accomplish from that market report. Are we looking to just learn about the market and then figure out how we can respond to it? Or are we looking to use that data to figure out how to enhance growth, or restrict growth, or manage growth? So I think trying to figure out what. I think we need to figure this out first before we, um, go to the grant. And I want to figure this out quickly because the grant deadline, I don't want to lose the grant. So the, we, we will submit something for the grant.
Yeah.
But the more clarity we can get on this, the better our grant chances are gonna be.
The main thing I don't, I don't want to do is, I don't want to lose our focus on what we're trying to do is understand what are the market needs, not, not just what is the market, but where do we think the market's gonna be such that we can position our zoning to be effective?
Yep.
In that, whatever else comes out of that as far as, well, that looks like managed growth and great, whatever. But I think that we need to keep our focus on that, because that's really what we need.
Yep, I agree.
As far as managing growth, I think, uh, one huge thing that's just unique to Chelmsford is the, the lack of sewer capacity.
is the lack of sewer capacity. I mean, that's, and we only have so many alternatives there, and I know DPW's doing a study to see if it makes sense, or what, you know, what are the costs, is it possible? And it will probably be 10, 12 years down the road before, if we are able to connect up to MWR, but we, but residents have to have a say in that, because guaranteed, they're going to be paying a lot more for their sewer, and that is the key that's going to unlock a whole lot of whatever controls, you know, not we're doing as planning board members, but whatever controls or limits that the sewer capacity is putting on, when you unlock that, that is now the key to unlock much, a lot of development.
Is that withholding Lowell back too? Because is Lowell at sewer capacity? Is that their problem? Why we're not seeing?
They are. I mean, they're, they're, they're working on, they have, they get millions of dollars from the federal government, because they have an antiquated system where their stormwater mixes in with the sewer, it's not a closed system. So they're trying to work in neighborhoods to separate that stormwater out, that in theory should decrease the flow to Duck Island, but still, I mean, this whole area, Greater Lowell has grown, so they're all, that plant is at capacity. That's my understanding.
Yeah. We have a dual tax rate. Not wildly dual, but we have a dual tax rate. Is there any legal reason why we can't have a dual sewer rate?
Well, we have, we have a tiered sewer rate right now.
Okay, we do have tiered sewer rates.
That was just implemented about roughly a year or two ago.
Okay, so, you guys are way ahead of me.
But that's my other concern about this, is that no matter what our strategy is, if it's enhancing growth or encouraging growth, there are other limitations to growth, that it won't matter what our strategy is, if those aren't taken care of first.
Right.
And I think John makes a good point. And if they are taken care of first, then it potentially unlocks an opportunity for quite significant growth. That might be more than we envision managing.
Yep. All right. Anything else on the state planning grant or strategic plan?
At the moment.
So, are, we're going to tell, is Evan writing this?
Yeah, Evan's writing the grant. He and I are aligned that we wouldn't miss the deadline, that we're going to try and get some clarity on the strategy first. If we can, we may incorporate some of that into the grant writing. But if not, then we'll just continue and then adjust things as we need to.
Yeah, so we really have to have that set, what we want by the next meeting, because the due date's the 5th.
Yep.
So, I mean, the first objective envisions guiding principles and core values for each component.
Anything else? All right. Climate resilience and sustainability design guidelines. This is a task force that is being brought about by the town to look at-
But there's a grant associated to this?
Yep, there's a grant associated with this one too. Don't know a whole lot about this, but it essentially is looking at how can we address as a town, climate resilience and sustainability in a lot of the designs. Low-impact development, things like that. So they're looking-
Have you granted this grant, or we're looking for it so far?
Sounds like we're looking for it.
Yeah, they're looking for it, but it's something that has been on, it's part of what the town has been trying to do for a while. A lot of different groups are trying to move this forward. So the town's bringing together Conservation, Planning Board, I can never remember the CEAS acronym.
Clean Energy and Sustainability.
Thank you.
That's a mouthful.
DPW, and then it'll include David Kuntz from Conservation and Evan as well. They did, Conservation yesterday appointed Peter as the member, they're only doing one Conservation member. We would like two Conservation members and two Planning Board members on this task force, but take what we can get. So we are looking for volunteers to be part of this task force. I don't know how long it'll go for, I don't know the frequency of meetings. Once we get the names, then David and Evan will start gathering communications and get people together. Mike?
Yeah.
So it looks like they're going to have monthly meetings.
If nothing else, Peter's entertaining.
I mean, month, I could do, if it's a monthly meeting, which is what it says under-
Yeah.
Task three. I could probably manage a monthly meeting.
Mike and Deirdre, would anyone else like to volunteer? And then we can choose.
Yeah, someone else wants to volunteer.
I'm interested too, but it depends on when they have it, if I can be involved.
I'm guessing it would probably be in the evenings, but I'm not 100% sure, because I know Peter does work. Saritha, Deirdre, and Mike, are there any other folks who would want it? Do two of you want to take the lead, and then one as an alternative?
I can be the alternative.
I definitely want to get involved.
Okay. Mike and Deirdre, and then Saritha, you can be the alternative if one of them can't do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's nothing to keep all three of us from going to the meeting.
Right, exactly.
All right.
Cool.
Any objections to those three?
No.
All right, sounds good. All right, liaison updates.
I had one, we had a meeting just before this meeting of the Community Preservation Committee. We have three grant proposals that were brought before us from Concom and/or the town. The most significant of them is to do a survey of Warren Poe's property, and that is like $45,000, I think. And that will come to town meeting at the June 29th town meeting, because of the dollar And in order to be in compliance with the community preservation law, I think, the, one of the, one of the things is that there has to be a baseline survey, and that has to be approved by the restriction holder. And then also, I mean, and, and the, and the town, and the, anyway, so that's, that, I guess it's only 33.6, sorry, I overstated the amount. And then there's two very much smaller amounts that won't go to town meeting, they're just got approved by the CPC. And one is to take, get invasives out of Warren Poe, and that was for, I don't know, $4,500, I think? Yeah, $4,500. And that's a project of the Conservation Commission. And then the other one is for $1,200, to do a meadow management study, because the way in which Warren Poe is beneficial ecologically is if it's a meadow that's appropriately maintained. So they're going to have a group, a consulting group, come in and advise on how to-
Yeah, there's some interesting issues.
Be a meadow.
It's not, it's not quite as simple as mow it.
Yep. All right. Anyone else?
I have a NIMCOG, or Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, meeting next Wednesday, the 21st, and I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow with the NIMCOG director, just to go over some materials for that meeting. So I'll have, at our next planning board meeting, I'll have more of a report on NIMCOG.
I didn't go to the ZBA meeting, but I did watch it the other day. There was a request for a special permit for 32 Bulwark Road for, it's a non-conforming structure, they needed some relief, it meets all the setbacks, but they wanted to add an addition, I believe that's going from a single family now to a, two-family, because it's in RC. And then the other interesting one was Crosby Village LLC. This is the one, the 40B proposal on 39 North Road and 3 Crosby Lane. The town, well, it was denied based off of the town evoked Safe Harbor.
Oh.
Finally.
We're there?
We're there.
Yeah. Obviously, they're gonna, they have the right to appeal our calculation, and they're going to go through that process to appeal it, but-
I think some of it's from the UMass property, right? That we, that put us over?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're actually going to have people in that build, in the, one of the buildings by Memorial Day, I heard.
Yeah. And I think, I heard that we've got a bunch of new units coming online soon that will also put us even further up.
Yeah.
So. Good.
Board of Health. I was tasked to ask about the gap analysis, that protection gap analysis, so I did ask. And they said that the consultant is putting together more questions based on the feedback that he got from the questions that he first put out. He'll also be looking at other towns, what kinds of regulations, bylaws they have. So he's still doing initial research. Then he'll want to meet with groups, and Donna said that he has basically a year on this project, I don't know exactly when he started, but Donna said that she will check and get back on what the timeframe is for, for this whole process. So as soon as I know that, I'll relay that. And then also on Hildreth, there's been no progress that they're aware of on the 21E, and they can't progress until they've resolved that, and it goes to DEP now.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, the, basically, Hildreth, the owner has to do a 21E, and as far as they're aware, there's been no progress on that. And that has to be resolved, that 21E has to be resolved, in order for them to be able to progress with the development.
Or with their appeal.
I would imagine that they could appeal independently, but, but as far as they're, you know, progressing with their development, they would need to have that. As far as the, the process with the Board of Health, in order to progress with that process, they need to resolve this 21E, and it is going to, the 21E is going to the DEP as well for review.
Going to where as well?
To DEP.
Oh. Is there any timeline in which they are required to proceed with the 21E? I think they had a year to complete it.
I think they have a year, yeah.
And how far are we into that?
Six months?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I think actually, yeah, I think they have to have it done either by October, November.
The 21E has to be done? And that's the current owner, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not the property possible.
Right. It's not the applicant.
Okay. Anyone else, liaisons? Conservation meeting was last night, it was quite interesting, really long meeting. Public input was plentiful on the cost MOU termination. They had three regular story hearings, one of which included the notice of intent for Old Westward Road. Part of the house was in the buffer zone, so they're going to, based on the peer review of the wetlands delineation, the wetlands delineation moved. So the house needs to move, which means the property lines have to move, which means they're going to be coming back to us for an A and R at some point.
This is that little piece of like the-
Yeah.
With the cow in the horse.
Yeah.
So, they will be back at some point with adjusted lot lines for that. They're also talking with the board, the Conservation Commission, about floodplain and going through some discussion related to that. As I mentioned, Peter is the Conservation Representative for the climate resilience discussion, and they're progressing pretty well with the wetland and bylaw review that they're doing. They've identified a few areas that they want to improve, they'll be drafting some areas, and then going before their full commission. They're leaning towards updating things with regulations instead of bylaws whenever they can, to keep the overhead pretty low. And then they also did a really good presentation on their updated land management model, and how they're going to be providing management for each of their sites. They listed who's going to be the primary commission member in charge of the site, stewards for the site in terms of trail maintenance and cleanup and things like that. And then they're going to be posting that on their website, so they're doing a lot of updating on their website with the new town site. So.
Danger of relying too much on your regulations is it doesn't carry the same weight as bylaws.
Yeah, they, I think they did mention that as a balancing act, so.
Yeah, so they're going to be more susceptible to appeal.
Did it seem like a positive, like a reset of the contention between?
Depends on who you ask.
Yeah.
I think from the Conservation Commission perspective, it's a definite reset. From other perspectives, it is not.
Because they're still doing actions there, like, all the time.
Reset for one?
How their open space properties are being managed.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the fundamental problem is, how do you get enough volunteers to do what you need to get done? And it's, as I've always said, volunteers get paid like anybody else, they just get paid in a different medium.
But they've got a really good plan that they've outlined for each of the properties, so it's, I don't know if it's posted yet, but it will be soon. They're also looking to put in, contact people for each of the sites, so if something's going wrong with the site, they'll have someone to communicate with.
I think it makes sense that it's driven from, that they're driving it.
Well, they have to. In most of these cases, there, there are conservation restrictions that are legally binding, and they have to abide by them, so.
And they do have, I mean, they do have their, their volunteers.
Yep.
They do have a good, outside of-
Outside of cost.
Yeah, they've always had that, so it just makes sense that-
Any other updates? Any new business? All right, meeting minutes. Has everyone reviewed the meeting minutes?
He finally got the February 26 one.
Can we do them all together?
I don't think so, because some people weren't here for them.
All right. Well, I'll, do you want to start with motions?
Let me pull up, just so we know who is here for each one.
I'm pretty sure I was here for all of them.
Yep. So for this one-
This is 2/26?
Yes, February 26th, everyone except for Saritha can vote. So I will take a motion.
I will move that we approve the minutes of February 26, 2025.
My second.
Mike made the motion, Anita a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous approval. All right, next one, the March 12th. For this one, everyone, same people voting.
I move that we approve the minutes of March 12th, 2025.
My second.
Motion from Mike, second by Anita, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nope. And the minutes are unanimously approved for March 12th.
For the record, we could, for the, we could have done all of them together, same people. I'm just pointing out.
I hadn't checked yet.
I had to review the attendance to know that, though.
I just wanted to make sure, because there were some that people weren't here.
They, they late dollars short.
It's always safe to do them separate.
All right. I will take a motion for approving meeting minutes of March twenty-sixth.
I guess I'm gonna move that too.
On a roll.
My second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous approval of those minutes too. And next meeting date is May twenty-eighth. I may need to make that start date a little bit later, it depends on how much we have on the agenda of that, that meeting, so it'll be seven, seven-thirty. But I'll talk to Evan beforehand and find out. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Everybody wants to.
Motion by Deirdre, second by Anita, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.